Sorry, we're running just a few minutes late. We had board interviews prior to our regular meeting, but I'll go ahead and call this May 15th, 2017, meeting of the Whitefish City Council to order. Thanks, everyone, for coming this evening. We'll start with our pledge of allegiance, and I would ask Rebecca Norton to lead us, please.
(intelligible)
Counselor Barbaris could not be here this evening, and Adam Hammett, our new city manager, is back at home, moving more of his furniture and belongings to Whitefish, so along with his family, hopefully, in June. Our next item is a proclamation, Kids to Parks Day, which we'll designate as May 20th this year, and I'll go ahead and read that proclamation now. Whereas May 20th, 2017, is the seventh Kids to Parks Day organized and launched by the National Park Trust, and whereas Kids to Parks Day empowers kids and encourages families to get outdoors and visit America's parks, and whereas it is important to introduce a new generation to our nation's parks, and whereas we should encourage children to lead a more active lifestyle to combat the issues of childhood obesity, diabetes mellitus, hypertension, and hypercholesterolemia, and whereas Kids to Parks Day is open to all children and adults across the country to encourage a large and diverse group of participants, and whereas Kids to Parks Day will broaden children's appreciation for nature and the outdoors, and therefore, I, John Melfeld, Mayor of the City of Whitefish, do hereby proclaim to participate in Kids to Parks Day, and I urge residents of Whitefish to make time on May 20th, 2017, to take their children, or their friends' children, and their lives to a neighborhood, state, or national park. Thanks very much. We'll move on to communications from the public. This is time set aside for the public to comment on items that are on the agenda but not advertised as a public hearing. We actually don't have any scheduled hearings this evening, so anything you'd wish to bring to the attention of the council, you can provide that comment now, and just name an address for the record, please. Karen?
Hi, I'm Karen Reeves, 230 Missy Lane, Whitefish, and I just wanted to speak to the council about the chaos that is coming to our front door. Whitefish has done a great job of encouraging attractive development and keeping it vibrant downtown, but the county has a different approach, and it's poised to open the floodgates to development in an area where Whitefish previously had jurisdiction. I'm sure you probably are aware, the county planning board recently approved a plan to make a mile and a half of Highway 93 leading right up to our boundaries into one-acre commercial lots, or smaller. No frontage or backage roads required, separate septics and wells, see how the entrances go. There's encouragement for all those things, but there's no way to enforce it, and so it's just going to be a matter of how it all rolls out. I give credit to the business owners of that area that kind of led the charge for this package. You know, they were interested in keeping a lot of things that Whitefish has done that are admirable in small signage and landscaping and downward-facing lights, but this could open up 115 or more commercial establishments in a mile and a half. Think Evergreen. Think -- trying to make a left-hand turn. Think trying to get down to Kalispell. It will be dangerous, disorderly, and depressing, quite frankly. I wish we had a county commission that was concerned about how our county looks and how it will grow. We are on our way to having a sprawling Cowfish Falls with a dribble to a downpour of commercial development lining all of our arterials, but it'll slow us down and contribute to the uglification of our beautiful valley. And I don't have a clear course of action. I'm here out of frustration with the city. The Flathead County Planning Board has open contempt for Whitefish residents, which is really frustrating because we are all Flathead County residents as well, despite whether our address is Whitefish, or Columbia Falls, or Big Fork, or whatever. And so I'm just asking for you and anybody in here tonight to call your commissioners and ask them what their vision for our county is, and let's try to think this through. I think we can do better than just seeing what happens. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Karen. Mary?
Just passing this out. Paul Seidman, if you're familiar with this, just for talking to my people. Mary Flowers, Assistant for Bear Flathead, 35 Fourth Street West in Kalispell. And I, too, want to speak to the issue of the county planning board meeting and their consideration of zoning both an overlay zone and a map amendment for approximately a mile and a half at the entrance to your southern boundary. As Karen said, this is an issue of both looking at the quality of development that happens, but it's even more so about the pace and the timing of development. And that is what has been proposed in the overlay zone, as I sent it to the county planning board. What we need is not a mile and a half of overlay zoning to set standards for the county. We need them quarter-wide throughout the county. And there was actually some receptivity to that, and thinking about this maybe being a template for that process. However, the proposal before the county is not just to set standards for development, it's to say, if we agree to provide some landscaping, if we agree to provide some combined accesses, then we want this kind of zoning. We're not willing to have one without the other. And that gets to the heart of the issue, which is, how will this city grow if you're hemmed in by inappropriate scale development on septic and water, individual wells, without the stormwater, without the kind of quality standards that have really made Whitefish an outstanding community because of the quality that you put into the kind of standards as you do grow? So that's an issue that's going to take more discussion, but what I really wanted tonight to bring your attention to is the tension between the city and the county. When I look at the piece that you, quite appropriately, and I appreciate, always put on your agenda, the rules for civil dialogue that were adopted not only by you, but all three cities and the county, I have to say that the meeting I attended, May 10th, at the county planning board, broke every one of these rules. And it's not appropriate. It discourages public participation. It intimidates public participation. The language used at that meeting was unacceptable. The tone and the nastiness, I guess is probably the most polite word to say, of the response that the audience got from the planning board in response to their comments. It is unacceptable, and I did bring you a copy of the DVD that I hope that you will again post on the city website so that everyone can see that. But I wouldn't be in this job, and I'm now on my 27th year, if I didn't always look for the opportunity and the way to move forward. And so what I want to encourage you to do, and one of the reasons I have this statute in front of you, because a lot of what has been the focus of not only your comments, but the county comments, has been number three under this statute, and that is whether or not the zoning regulations are consistent. But that is only a minor part of this issue. What is equally important is that there is compatible urban growth in the vicinity of the cities and towns. Compatible means that you can grow in a cost-effective way and expand once you've reached an infill, and yet you're doing great work on doing infill, but you need, and the reason, if you look at the legislative history of this statute, the whole intent was to allow cities to be able to grow outside their city limits. And so the opportunity here, and I think it's going to take a real commitment on this council's part, is to really invest in telling a story about the economics of Whitefish, about the reason that you have put in the standards you have, how they've increased your economic value, both from your tax base, to talk about the pace at which you are growing and the capacity you have to still grow. That story is not being told, and I think you have an opportunity now. This hearing, under the county zoning statutes, they have to give 45 days' notice before it goes to the county commissioners. Because of people being out of town and other issues, it's looking like this won't happen until maybe the second or third week in August. So there's some time here, and I hope that you will invest staff time, city council time. I'd be glad to sit down and talk to you about some of the insights I've had of having attended all of these meetings. Dave Taylor has been at the meetings as well. But we're not getting the kind of attendance from the City of Whitefish, and I would quite honestly say, given the nature of the meeting last night, there's a real reason why people don't feel inspired to go there. But I think we have the opportunity to wholesome discussions here in Whitefish and to really showcase a response. And I think the planning board, there are some thoughtful members on that county planning board who would really like to hear some broader concepts from the city beyond just this issue of consistency. And so I think that's your challenge, to tell your story and to tell it more effectively, and to really open a door to possibly finding a better solution than what's on the table right now. So I encourage you to do that, and thank you for your time.
Thanks, Mary. Did you drop a copy of the disk? Okay. If you don't mind handing that to Michelle, we can enter it into the public record.
And I did forget to say I did email this evening a copy of the comments that we submitted for that hearing, just for your record.
Great. Thanks, Mary. Appreciate your time and effort. Further public comment tonight?
Good evening.
Gary, how are you?
Counselor Seif.
Good to see you.
Thank you very much for hearing me. I'm sorry that -- I'm Gary Stevens. I live at 1470 Barclay Lane. I'm also the owner of the Targary building behind the parking structure downtown. Last fall, we had a paving down in the alley. (inaudible) damaged my railing back behind the building, and I contacted City Hall in the fall, and they said, well, they'd take a look at it, and it went all winter, and I haven't said anything. I went down about two weeks ago to City Hall and asked again about when I possibly might get this repaired, and I haven't gotten anything back, so that's why I'm coming to you, because I haven't heard anything, and nobody's contacted me, even after I've contacted City Hall twice. So I'm just hoping that somehow we can get this damage taken care of. It was done by the paving contractor, I believe, that was doing the alley. Anyway, I've been patient all winter. It's been that way all winter, and I'm hoping that somehow we'll get this repaired. Thank you.
We'll address this directly with Craig, our public works director, and Adam when he returns. Thanks, Gary. Jen?
If I could, just a quick question for Gary. Did you, by chance, mention that to Mike Cronquist, our owner's representative on the project? At all?
No, I did not.
That's okay.
Let's see. I forget what happened last fall. It seems like, yes, as a matter of fact, I did go down to the trailer.
Okay.
I remember going into the trailer and talking to them. They said, well, that wasn't their responsibility.
Okay. Thank you.
Gary, I think Craig Workman wanted to address your comments, too.
Yeah, I'm sorry I haven't gotten back to you, Gary. We are aware of it. It is on a punch list on the project, and I happened to be out there looking at it probably two weeks ago, and I talked to Trek about it. I'll call you tomorrow and discuss the details, but --
I just haven't heard.
And I apologize for that.
I haven't heard or everything.
Okay.
That's why I'm here.
We'll be in touch.
I prefer to go through the channels when I can, so, all right. Thanks.
Thanks, Gary. Further public comment tonight? Sir?
Hi, my name is Randy Dunlop. I live in Lefford, Alberta, Monquinak. I have a property in Whitefish. I've been a taxpayer since 1980. I had a place at 1030 Birch Point Drive, and I had a dock and a shore station, and my issue is a shore station. Anyways, so I bought another property down the lake at 736 Birch Point Drive, which is actually a bigger property and quite of my dream house, anyways. So I put my dock in, and my dock was extended because the water's so shallow in front of -- I'd raided the mouth of the river and the lake. I don't know if you're familiar with it, but it's a shallow area of the lake, and so the previous owner had a grandfather that he could take the dock out further some years ago. Anyway, so I took it out to the same length, put my shore station in, put my cover on my shore station, which you need, because it helps prevent damage to the boat. Anyways, so I thought everything was good. The Whitefish Lake Dock guys took my shore station cover off, and they said, you can't do this. I said, wow. That was last fall, so I just kind of left it because I didn't need it, of course, through the winter, and now I want to put my shore stage together, so here I'm in the process of trying to get the same cover for my shore station. But my issue is that, of course, the shore station cover is what I had before down the street on a smaller property. Now I got the same idea, but the only thing is that because of the dock extension, which I need because it's so shallow, which also protects people coming in and out of the river, like, it's a great thing. I mean, I watch people go by there and they bang their boats, or their props, or whatever. Anyways, so it's a great precaution thing for the lake and the city, anyways. So I have it out 100 feet, but to put the cover on my shore station actually takes me over the square footage I'm allowed. So it's -- and it's within feet. Now, previously, the previous owner had a catamaran, or not a catamaran, but a pontoon boat with a cover on it, and the cover is larger than the cover on my shore station. So, I mean, it's kind of a pair of sixes, and I can't get this done, so that's why I'm here asking for your permission, plus the taxes at this new property are pretty dear, so, I mean, paying almost $3,000 a month in taxes. I would just like a little bit of an amusement on those things. That's my issue. Questions?
We might have questions when this comes up later in the agenda.
Oh, absolutely.
No, that's quite all right. If you want to stick around, we'll get to that probably in just a few minutes. It's literally the first item on our agenda tonight. But thanks for the comments, Randy. Further public comments? Not seeing any. We'll stay with the audience. Any volunteer board reports? Rebecca?
Rebecca Norton, 530 Scott Avenue, and I have two board reports. One is the Wisconsin Avenue Steering Committee. It's going great. Kate McMahon is a rock star in planning. I think she's really been easy to work with, and I think it's the main thing that we're running into is there's a lot of questions about one of the key areas that are going to develop out at the road to Big Mountain, and there's a large property there currently zoned. The owner could build nine houses on the lakeside and up to 200 going up the mountain, and so there's discussion about a possible lodge going in there. It's currently zoned county along the lake, and I think it's city up towards the mountain. And so on Wednesday night this week at 5:00 here, we're going to have pizza and a PowerPoint presentation for people that are worried about what's going to go in down there. We've already taken two hours, probably, or two and a half hours of the committee's time to talk to the representatives of the owner, and most of the public has shown up for this one issue. So we thought we'd just have a designated period of time where people in the public could come in and just see what's going on. We were not going to -- and also, the committee members had questions, too, because some of them were concerned that we might recommend a lodge versus no lodge, and they wanted more information about that before we finalized the discussion. We think we'll probably be done in June, but we're still looking for names for that corridor, so if anybody has fun names for that section of town. Okay. And then the second thing I wanted to get back with you on, because Richard was requesting this, thank you, was the Local Government Review Committee. And I am the minority person. I was kind of waiting for the majority report to come out, because a lot of the things that I wanted to include would have come under a minority report, because out of three commissioners, I was the one that wanted them, and two of them didn't. So I was going to add comments at that point, but I think I'm going to just push it forward because we haven't actually met for quite a while. And then I am going to work with Angela, I think, to try to finalize something to submit formally, and then Turner and Ken can sign it if it's agreeable to them. I also have kind of a lot of information that we've gathered from the public, which is kind of fun to hear, but I tried to just make it very short in this. And just a reminder to the public, every 10 years, if the citizens of Whitefish decide to review our form of government, we hold an election, and we elect commissioners. They're trained. This time, we went down to Bozeman. We meet formally, and we do an external review of how we govern ourselves, whether or not we want to change the form of government, and if it's working. So this is, I think, the fourth time we've done it, but I figured I better get this done before 10 years is up, because it's been a while. Okay, so the areas that we all thought were going great was the charter form of government, we think is great because it allows us to create our own laws and address the immediate local needs. The city council form of government continues to be the desirable form of governing. A strong mayor form of government with a city administrator and elected counselors, still desirable. Terms of the council, we think, should stay the same. We did talk about that with council and with the mayor about changing it, but we couldn't figure out another way to do it. And volunteer boards are a huge part of our government, and we should encourage leadership through that. So what I put down for the minority opinion was wards. Charlie Abel showed up frequently to our meetings, and he really wanted wards. I really wanted them in the beginning, and I think we should try to create something like wards, where we actually meet with distinct neighborhoods if possible. Columbia Falls and Kalispell do have wards, and they're based on the population within the city, so you'd have to designate where the population is equally based. But when we were going through the discussions, it seemed more like geographical issues were coming up. Noise in the city and lake shore issues in the lake area. Big Mountain has its own issues. So the recommendation that I have is that you actually pursue somehow addressing diverse neighborhood issues and have people actually try to meet with people in those areas for planning and also emergency responsiveness. I think it just would make people feel more included, I think. My second one was climate change. The good thing about waiting a while before we got this done was that a lot of the things I was worried about are already done, so I invited Steve Thompson to our meeting, thinking it would probably be the most immediate thing we'd be addressing in the next 10 years, but the other commissioners didn't think it was urgent, so that's now progressed into a city advocated. I don't know what you call it, but it's an action.
Committee.
Committee? Okay. Ethics. I really thought we should recommend updating our ethics policy like we had done before. That was turned down by another council, and I would still recommend that you adopt that revised ethics policy. I felt like, as a commissioner, it was a very weak link, not only in our city, but in the county, because of the, well, basically, the way the donut was brought down through the city council, and there's things that I had great concern about. And so when I called the county attorney about how you file complaints, we don't file them in the county. There's no mechanism, and so I think, as a city, we need to strengthen our ethics policy and the training of ethics, and be very clear about who you're representing when you're in an office. The fourth thing was the Omsfudsmann, which you know is on the ballot. About 10% of the citizens voted for it. I think I still really like this idea because Mr. Stevens just came and talked about how he notified the city, never got a call back. Now he showed up here in front of city council to find out what's going on with his property, and I've been at other city council meetings where that same issue has come up, where people have tried to work through the city numerous times, and it's affecting their own property values, and we don't deal with it in a timely manner regularly. So I think there are software programs that we can use to track when a call has come in, who's answering that call, what the problem was, and when the resolution occurred. And Chuck told me I'm the only one that worries about it, but I really think it's an issue for us, and I think it affects our perception in the city of being a responsive government. So I'll be bringing more information to you. We did a survey, and we did a public house, I mean, an open house, and we gathered ideas from people, but I just wanted you to know, I haven't forgotten about it. I know Turner and Ken haven't forgotten about it, and I'm going to try to push it to tidy it up now if we can. So any questions from you guys?
Any questions for Rebecca? Just a point. First of all, thanks for the report. I really appreciate the thoughtfulness and the fact that you took the time to prepare this. We were contacted by the state asking for our reports. Would you mind if this was submitted in addition to Ken and Turner's when we do receive that?
Oh, yeah. No, that's kind of why I thought I should.
Okay.
Usually, I think you're supposed to have the majority report first, but I thought maybe it would kick things into play a little bit. We'll see.
Good idea. Hopefully, it works.
Well, if not, I mean, I don't think -- I don't -- we didn't find a lot that we would change with the city at all, really. We were -- everybody was just really pleased with how we've done, I think, but we were hoping that we could take a lot of the public comments and give input. And the only thing I know that Ken was a little worried about was some of the allocation of funds, and then we got word back from Chuck about how that worked with the mill levies, and so that worry went away. So really, I think we just have to get down to the formality of finishing it. So thank you.
Thanks very much, Rebecca. Further volunteer board reports from the audience? Not seeing any. How about the council? And we'll start with Richard.
Sure.
Sure. Just as a quick reminder, this is Bike to School or Bike to Work Week this entire week. Should be for a lifetime, but anyway, that's an editorial aside. May 17th is Bike to School Day, and there'll be prizes for the young people. And so I want to encourage our viewing audience and everybody here to really be careful out there, particularly on Wednesday, as all these young people start riding to school. It's a big day for them and there'll be a lot of them out there. Also, there are various, some other projects that are going on. And one of those is the Community Commuter Challenge. That's available online. And Maria, do you know how you find that online? No, I don't either. But anyway, Bike to Work and Bike to School and Ride Your Bike, but wear a helmet. It's good for you.
Thanks, Richard. Further volunteer board reports?
Why, I'm not finished, Mr. Mayor.
Continue, continue. I should know better.
I couldn't pass that one up. The Climate Action Plan Committee meets tomorrow at 5:00 right here.
Thanks, Richard. Further reports from the council? Not seeing any. We'll move on to what will be our consent agenda. Any changes or additions to the May 1 minutes or can I have a motion? Richard?
I do have a change in the minutes and then I'll make a motion. On page 43, Michelle, the second paragraph, no, sorry, first paragraph where it says there are two types of classifications of e-bikes. It says neither can go over 25 miles per hour. That should be 20 miles per hour, if you would please. And then I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the minutes as corrected.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Seceded by Counselor Sweeney. Further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign, and that carries unanimously. Michelle, we have no scheduled public hearings tonight, which is very rare. So we'll move on to item eight, which is communications from our building and planning director, who's not here tonight. But in his absence, we do have Bailey and Wendy. And we have item 8A, which is consideration of denying an application from Randy Dunlop for a Whitefish Lake and Lake Shore variance at 736 Birch Point Drive to impervious coverage. And this is on page 76 of your packet. Bailey?
Okay, good evening. So this is staff report WLV 17-W08. It actually was before you in May, at your first meeting in May, and the applicant postponed it so he could be here tonight. You heard from him already. But definitely I encourage you to ask him more questions or bring him back up if you do have more questions. So I'm going to kind of give a brief overview. So it's, the property is at 736 Birch Point Drive. The property has 87.93 feet of frontage, and that's per the property plat. So the applicant is requesting a minor variance to the allowed constructed area in order to install a boat canopy above a permitted boat lift adjacent to their permitted dock. The minor variance is to our allowed amount of constructed area, which says that it shall not exceed eight square feet for each linear foot of shoreline. And basically, the applicant is proposing, he would like to put a canopy that's eight feet wide by 20 feet long for a total of 160 square feet of constructed area. His existing dock, which was permitted in 2016, is 660.8 square feet of constructed area. So the total with the boat canopy and the dock would be 780.8. The subject property with the 87.9 feet of frontage is only eligible for 703.4 square feet of constructed area. So he would exceed the allowance by 77.36 square feet. So as I said, there's an existing dock that was approved on the property and then the boat lift as well. There's no other development within the lake shore protection zone at this time. So it is just the canopy and the dock that we'd be looking at. So minor variances, there's four criteria for reviewing them under the lake shore regulations. And I'm going to kind of hit all four of them since there's not a lot of them. So the dock was permitted, as I said last year, to extend out 98 feet into the lake. So it was further than our 60 feet. He was able to provide a water depth profile that showed that he didn't have the four feet of water depth at 60 feet. So he is allowed to go out to a maximum of 100 feet. But that all has to be within the constructed area allowance. So he was able to show that. The property is located literally adjacent to where the Whitefish River empty, or I should say Whitefish Lake empties into the Whitefish River. It's just to the western side of that area if you're looking at an overview map. This area is, obviously it is the shallowest point of the lake. It is where the water is leaving. The majority, the dock required pretty much the majority of the lake shore, the constructed area coverage for it. We do have specifically in our regulations, we count the boat canopies into the constructed area allowance. It is actually specifically stated. I'm assuming it was something added over time just to keep down the amount of constructed area that was in the lake shore protection zone. So in order to provide enough area for the calc, in order to be under that calculation, the dock would actually be, need to be reduced by approximately 16 feet in length if you were to take off the, enough to make the canopy work. So he is claiming that it's, he has a hardship due to the shallow topographic circumstances of the lake. He really is unable to reduce his dock and be able to provide boat access. So the second criteria is there are no reasonable alternatives. As I said, I mean, really, the dock, shortening the dock by 16 feet would be needed. However, that would limit the boat access to it. However, he does have an outer wing that could be an option in order to remove it. It's currently an L-shaped dock and he could turn it into an I-shaped dock that would be able to get the constructed area allowance. That might not be something that he wants to do, but that is a reasonable alternative under that criteria. The variance would not materially diminish the water quality or diminish fish or wildlife habitat or create a public nuisance. It would not alter the characteristics of the shoreline. So it does appear to meet those criteria. The last criteria is, in my opinion, I think is kind of the main criteria. And that is that granting the variance is supposed to result in a general and universal public benefit. And personally, it doesn't appear that granting the variance to the boat canopy would meet that criteria. The benefit is really just to the one property owner. So in order for staff to recommend approval of the variance, they would have to meet all four criteria. Due to being able to have an alternative, I mean, it's not the best, but taking off the outer wing is an option to get that square footage requirement or shortening the dock. And that's, I mean, that's an option. I can't deny that option. And then it's not a general benefit. Therefore, staff is recommending denial of the variance. And I say that with a, not easily as well. So staff, as I said, we're recommending denial of the variance request. This did go to the Lake Shore Protection Committee on April 12th. They did consider the request. There was no members of the public there. The applicant wasn't present. They did also recommend denial of the variance request since it doesn't appear that it's meeting all four criteria in order for approval. And so I did provide a draft finding of fact for denial. I'm happy to answer more questions. And as I said, the applicant is here as well. I told him to be here. But I can try to answer any questions from the council as well.
Thanks, Bailey. Any questions for Bailey? We also have Randy present if there's any questions for the actual applicant. Frank?
Bailey, when his dock was approved a year ago, it was approved specifically with the condition that it could not have a cover. Is that correct?
It did. And that was added because the size of the boat lift in order to do the canopy would kick it over the maximum allowed. So therefore, and I've done it for a number of them, we've approved them with a condition that says you are not allowed to put a canopy on your boat lift without coming in and either applying for a variance or doing some other alternative to get that constructed area.
And he knew that at the time?
Yes.
Okay. Second question, have we granted variances for these kinds of things in the past?
You know, we do, we've granted a few. I should say, we don't get a lot of them. Maybe one a year that I get a variance for. Most of the ones that we have had to come for an impervious coverage variance has been, I guess the last one was to do a retaining wall because the property was actually kind of, there was a house and it was more of a sloughing issue with the stability of the bank and redoing that. And that would have actually dumped more fill material either closer to the lake or in the flood plain. And so actually to put that retaining wall in, because we count retaining walls in the constructed area allowance as well. So they came and asked for a variance for that. I think it was about 80 feet in order to put the retaining wall in the same location that it was. But usually I don't get, we don't get a lot of them. I don't know of one specifically for a canopy. Off the top of my head, so.
Frank, I'll follow up. When I was on the Lake Shore Committee, we did sometimes have variance requests when you have properties that are 50 feet and less in terms of lake frontage, which essentially restricted the reasonable use of the property. So under that situation, a variance was requested where they could, you know, at least improve the lake front with a reasonably sized dock and other improvements.
Yeah, because the standard for docks is have at least 20 feet, a setback of 20 feet. So by the time you get 40 feet of setback and now you have a dock that's, you know, eight feet wide, and if there's a big boulder, now you need to move it over. So there are options. We just don't get a lot of them.
Further questions for Bailey or the applicant? Not seeing any. Thanks, Bailey. Randy, did you have anything else to add? We've already entered into record your comments earlier for sure, but if there's anything further you'd like to add at this point?
I just wanted to say that, you know, the reason, I mean, it's not, it is a big deal to me because I'm not here all the time and it just protects my boat. It's not a big thing, I don't think, for the lake, but been here forever. The reason is because I have to extend my dock out. I mean, and it actually helps the city out immensely because it directs traffic in and out of that river. I mean, I could shorten my dock, but actually that would cause more aggravation for everybody using the lake access and the river access. This is a small variance. I don't know. I'm just thinking it's, you know, I had it at my old property, which was a much smaller property. I didn't realize, I mean, it wasn't intentional that I put my shore station together last year and put it in there. I just, I didn't know the rules. I just thought, bigger property, I can put a shore station. I mean, the shore station is fine, just a cover on it. It looks better with a cover on it than without. It's just, you know, it's a small thing. Been a taxpayer here forever. I mean, it's just like, you know, I mean, it just doesn't make any sense to me why you wouldn't allow it because it actually helps everybody out. Helps everybody on the lake out. It directs traffic a lot better. I've got letters from both my neighbors endorsing my commitment or my position on this thing. They want, I got those if you want on both sides. Doesn't affect anyone.
Thanks, Randy. We'll deliberate. Katie, do you have a question?
I do. Randy, if I may ask you a question. I do believe it was brought up that you were claiming that water was damaging the boat from your boat cover as it was pooling as you're gone. Could you expand upon that comment?
Well, so if I can't, if I can't have a cover on my shore station, I can put a cover on my boat, which is kind of, but when it rains a lot and what happens, you know, on the whitefish weather, I mean, when you get a storm and it comes in here and you get a lot of rain in a short period of time, all the water goes into my boat and then it causes all sorts of problems to my boat because that's what happened when they took it off, when the lakeshore guys took my thing off. I said, why'd you take that off? And he said, well, city said I had to take it off. Okay, well, my boat was full of water. And it causes problems because when water's sitting in your boat, it's got nowhere to
But it is possible to have a cover for your boat, just not for your shore station. Is that correct?
Yeah, Richard, what I do is I have a cover for my shores, for the boat, which covers the boat. And then I have a cover for my shore station. I crank my boat up out of the water, which is great. So it's in a storm, it doesn't matter. And then the cover protects the actual cover that's on, so it kind of looks like an umbrella. So it gets most of the water off of the boat. Whereas if you got a cover on your boat, I mean, if they get saturated, which they do, water starts going through and it's not effective. So it really is beneficial to have that cover on.
Okay.
And especially like with hails or anything like that, it's even worse.
Thanks, Randy. If we have further questions, we'll call you back up to the podium. Yeah, address and name for the record, please, if you approach the podium.
My name is Lucy D'Angelo.
Thanks, Lee, just if you don't mind.
I just came because Randy bought my place that I lived at for 40 years. And the problem there is it's extremely shallow. I mean, really shallow. And over the years I've been there, I have towed two boats to City Beach that have lost their lower units. I have watched numerous boats hit the rocks out there, you know, come screaming by there. Having that dock out there really does help. He actually needs more, you know, lake frontage or, you know, dock even further out. And at one time I was going to do it. And I went to the lakeshore, you know, when Andy was on to get a permit. I think you were on it, weren't you?
I was never, that's the one committee I've probably never saw.
By the way, you know, it's just so shallow out there. And it's, in the end of July, middle of July, it gets down a foot and a half of water into the dock. I mean, just to get a boat in there, you need a shore station. I had a pontoon boat, so it wasn't a problem. I only needed that much water. But a normal boat, you know, you get a storm, you get the big storms coming in, you got to have a shore station. And the shore station, you know, for a boat is pretty important. And he's got an expensive boat and all that. That's, you know, his problem. But, you know, the cover on it is, the shore stations are already there. You know, I mean, it's got the, you know, the shore station. The cover, you know, in my opinion, makes it look nicer. And they're, you know, they're all over. Getter doesn't care. Whitman doesn't care on the other side. And I tried to get ahold of Charlie Abel. He lives in the trees there and I'm sure that Charlie wouldn't have a problem. But it's just so shallow there. It's actually dangerous. And his dock, or at the time it used to be my dock, and my dock actually was further because, I mean, it was an older dock that needed some work and he put in a nice new easy dock. But the shore station, I think, is important for his boat and then the canopy just protects an investment. And unfortunately, it does pay a few taxes.
You indicated, Lee, since you've lived at the property, if you were to shorten that dock length 16 feet back to what would be?
It gets shallower back there. And there's rocks back there.
That was my question, by how much?
Absolutely. And it's not, it goes out like this. I mean, it's, right now, it's fine. But as you all know, once you live on the lake, I mean, it's going to drop, it's going to start dropping real fast. And usually July 4th, you watch the people come up the canoe, you know, on the river. I always bet on who's going to tip over because it's, and then the next day they're back there getting their stuff. But the lake is fine now. But the rest, most of the summer, it's, you can't, you know, you can't get in there. You need that long dock. Wish I had the frontage that Andy did, but don't, so.
Thanks, Lee. Jen?
Just for clarification, this property, is this the one directly west of the lake output into Whitefish Lake?
Richard?
I'm, let's see if I can move this off the dime just a little bit. I don't know where it'll go. But given that it was denied by the Lake Shore Committee on a recommendation from staff and that it does not meet the criteria as established, there's nothing I can do to change that criteria at this point. So I would move to deny.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second and speak to that.
Seceded by Counselor Fury. And we'll turn it to Andy Ford. Comment?
I certainly understand Mr. Dunlop's perspective. I appreciate Lee's input. We actually served on the Board of Adjustments, so he kind of knows how the game is played. In the zoning case, we have seven criteria, all of which need to be met. Here we have four criteria and we don't even specify that all four need to be met. But we can't meet any four of them. We possibly could make a little bit of an argument that the length of the dock provides a navigational aid. But it still doesn't get us over the fact that we're exceeding the allowable constructed area within the lake shore protection zone. the allowable constructed area within the Lakeshore Protection Zone. What happens when we don't meet those criteria for grantings of variances is we move from being objective to being very subjective in our approach. And who's to say that 77 feet is fine, but then 81 feet isn't fine? So we have those criteria and we have those criteria for a reason and that is to allow us to be objective, allow us to be fair, and allow us to not be viewed as arbitrary in our application of the rules and regulations and therefore I have to support the motion.
Thanks Andy. Further discussion on the motion? Frank.
I concur with Andy's analysis of it, what I, I guess what kind of gets me one way or the other is that the difference between a constructed cover over a boat and a boat cover on a boat, still up in the air, in terms of impervial surfaces that we're talking about, I have a hard time with that argument just mentally. And so I, I struggle with this one in a, in a lot of ways because of that. I mean, it's just like, a cover's a cover's a cover. Is it suspended over the boat or is it on the boat? So, okay, and if it's on the boat, it doesn't count it, if it's above the boat, it gets counted. That's a little arbitrary to me, under the circumstances, although I do agree with Andy's analysis 100%. I mean, they're there for a reason. Mr. Dunlop, you knew it when you got your permit for the, for the, for the, for the shore station and for the dock itself, that the, the cover was not gonna be allowed. So, but I struggle with this one for that very reason because there is, a cover's a cover. I have a hard one with that.
Andy.
I mean, I guess I would respond to that, there, there is a big difference and the big difference is when that cover goes on the boat lift, it goes on this week. A lot of docks are going up now. It doesn't come off till October. It doesn't move, it's there, it's constructed visual obstruction in the Lakeshore Protection Zone for the entire boating season. Boats come and go, they move, they're gone, and regardless of whether or not we struggle with the definition of that, that is the definition within the regulations. The definition is that that is constructed area to be counted against total constructed area within the Lakeshore Protection Zone, as where a cover on your boat is not, as your boat is not, because it moves.
Jen.
Having lived on the lake, I understand the current construction of the dock and the, the desire to have a covered dock station, and I definitely understand that area of the lake. However, I do see reasonable alternatives to providing a covered station, given your current dock alignment, so it may not be the ideal alignment in the end, but I do see an alternative and so therefore I just can't proceed with allowing a variance.
Further discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign and the motion carries on a four to one vote with Counselor Williams abstaining. Thanks for your time, Mr. Dunlop. I know it wasn't the outcome you were looking for, but this council did give it thorough debate. We'll move on to item nine, which is our written report enclosed with the packet. Any questions for our acting city manager Dana Smith? Not seeing any. Dana, any other items to report?
Sure. Adam asked that I provide two updates for you this evening. One is the Whitefish Housing Task Force. They have finalized a contract with Reese Consulting and June 13th is the open house that they will be having from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. So just, there'll be two other work session dates for the task force in June and that project will be wrapping up in the fall, is my understanding. Also, City Hall update, we are still monitoring moving dates, but as of right now, we are planned and scheduled to start moving the basement Wednesday afternoon. And then other City Hall offices will move Thursday and Friday and we will be open for business on the Monday, the 22nd. And that is all I have for this evening.
Thanks Dana. So that, that date is for the Affordable Housing kickoff meeting, phase two, that's the 13th and not the 14th?
This says, the open house is Tuesday, June 13th and unfortunately, that does conflict with our first, or second budget work session meeting, so if discussion needs to happen about that, we can.
We might need to move that because I'm scheduled to be at the meeting on the 13th from 5:00 to 7:00.
Okay. Why don't we all work with Adam on maybe sending out a doodle poll or of some sort and I think Adam might actually be gone June 13th, so, or coming back that day?
I think he's coming back that day.
So it might be better also to give him an extra day or two, so we can work on rescheduling, but we do need to reschedule it before the next city council meeting because you'll have to adopt the preliminary budget at your second June meeting, so.
Okay.
Okay.
So that would be the 19th, so it would have to be that week.
That week sometime.
Okay.
Yep.
Thanks Dana.
Thanks.
We'll move on to item nine C, which will be Resolution 17-22, and this is a resolution declaring certain property to be unneeded and obsolete and authorizing the disposal of such property and I believe Dana handed out a list of the related property. Dana.
Thank you. All right, well, with our approaching move to the new City Hall, we do have furniture and equipment that we will be selling in a surplus auction. In accordance with Montana Code annotated, we have to have the city council declare all of the items that we will be selling as surplus, unneeded equipment that is obsolete in staff's opinion. So you did get a new list, an updated list, actually, we did add one dump truck to the list from Public Works. That's the only change and I highlighted it in yellow for you and I gave a copy to Michelle. We have contracted with Rochon's Auction Service and we will be holding our auction Wednesday, May 24th in the evening, starting at 5:30 p.m. This is the same company that did our auction before, so we're excited to continue working with them. And the auctioneer will receive 15% of the sale price and we have allowed for $600 of advertising. He did pick up a stack of flyers today. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but staff respectfully recommends that the city council approve Resolution, what would be Resolution 17-22, declaring certain property to be unneeded and obsolete and authorizing the disposal of such property.
Thanks Dana. Can I have a motion to that effect, please, or if there are any questions?
I would move to approve Resolution 17-22, a resolution declaring certain property to be unneeded and obsolete and authorizing the disposal of such property.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second. Sure, second.
Seconded by Counselor Sweeney. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign and that carries unanimously. Michelle, we'll move on to our third quarter financial report and we'll turn back to now our finance director Dana Smith.
All right.
Wearing multiple hats this week.
I am. Thank you. So today in your packet, you have our third quarter financial report. I apologize for it being a, a meeting late, but I had to get the budget done first. But overall, everything's looking great. Total cash and property tax supported funds has increased slightly, about 1.4%. The general fund cash balance again is up somewhat significantly, about 21 and a half percent compared to last year, but again, it has to do with using resort tax relief more than we did property tax revenue. Some other notable changes though in our general fund is that municipal court fines and forfeitures are at 36% or $51,000 more than last year at this time. But we have also seen a decrease in charges for services, which is mostly related to planning fees and I'll get into that in a little bit. Parks and Recreation Fund continues to see improvement in cash balance compared to last year. The improvement noted, again, we have somewhat a compounding effect from the ice rink from contracting with a private, or with a nonprofit in November of 2015, but also Parks and Rec staff has done a really great job monitoring their budget each month. So we, we'll, we'll consider, I believe that the cash balance will continue to increase along with how the budget expects it to do so. The Law Enforcement Fund cash balance, it's, it is slightly up from last year. I do have, or from the last quarter, I do have some concerns about that fund while we look good right now. We did have a police car that was involved in an accident, that's an unexpected cost. It was not a totaled vehicle, but we, we have submitted our claim for insurance and it just depends on the timing of receiving that money versus when we actually have to spend the money to fix the car, so whether or not that happens by year end is still to, to be determined. Fire and ambulance fund, from the prior year third quarter, we are down about 42%. This is still somewhat having to do with the prior years, or two years ago maybe now, the ambulance service charges, we had a delay in billing, but we are seeing, I think, better collections as we're moving forward. I just closed out April, so I'm, I'm getting more confident with the company that we're working with. And last year, we did start the fund off with a lower cash balance anyways, so it is expected, whether or not, it sounds good, it is, it is an expected spend down at this point. The other thing that you're seeing is fire prevention program fees are also down. Again, that has to do with building permits and planning fees and I'll get into that in a second. But overall, the city's property tax supportive funds remain in good condition and they're all following the budget as expected, so not too many surprises there. Resort tax collections are up right now. They are 89% of the fiscal year 17 budget, so there will be additional property tax relief at the end of the year, assuming the next two months are strong months, which I have no doubt that they will be. Ambulance service charges are up actually and that has to do with our rate increase that we did not too long ago, I believe it was in January. And we'll just have to wait and see, you know, how the collections go, but again, I'm feeling more confident with the company we're working with now. Now to get into the building side, into the license and permit revenues, zoning plan review fees, planning fees. Overall, we're actually down from last year. Now we, it is expected, last year was a really great year, we had City Hall in there, a lot of commercial and residential activity. In the fiscal year 18 budget, we did account for somewhat of a decrease from this year just because of the year-to-date figures we're seeing. May last year was our highest May yet, this May so far, I haven't quite seen those numbers and I, I don't know that we'll be meeting our budgeted revenue figures for the Building Code Fund and the license and permit revenue. But that, that wouldn't have any impact on property taxes whatsoever, but as we start to build back that cash balance, we just need to be prepared for a future downturn. And I don't think that we're having a downturn now, I think we had a really strong year last year and we will in the future have strong years that come and go, just depending on what building permits are received. According to TAD, our building inspector, there are some in the pipeline, so I think, you know, whether they come in by year end or not will be a factor in how we end the year out, so. Provided a lot of detail in here for you, but I'm not gonna go through it all. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thanks Dana. Any questions for Dana on the third quarter report? Richard.
Yes Dana, you got to it, but I'd like a little clarification if I can. On page 123 of the packet, under the Law Enforcement Fund, you say the timing of expenditures, especially the vehicle purchase and collection of grant revenues during the last two months of the fiscal year could impact that projection quite significantly. Is that worrisome to you at all when you say, it, it just jumped my attention when you say quite significantly?
Right. You know, I think, I mean, significantly obviously is one that is gonna be based on how you define that term, but, you know, when you're talking about a $30,000 vehicle, if we do not buy that this year, we go from $795 up to $30,795. The vehicle, I believe that we had to repair, I think it came out around $16,000, our deductible is $2,500, so we might have just some timing differences on when repairs are paid for and when we receive the insurance from that. The overall, though, I think we'll be okay, we do have the grants, that timing of grant revenue has, it's been consistent with the cops grant, that's the only one that really stands out, but there are some concerns in the police fund that I have and as you'll see in your fiscal year 18 budget, we actually reduced the revenue anticipated in that fund. I would, I would rather be on the safe side and, and not assume grants that we haven't been awarded yet, you know, would be coming in, so we've taken a little bit more conservative approach in the police fund. But overall, right now, I don't have any major concerns, just there could be a shift of cash balance. So it would just shift though to the next year though, so if we don't buy the vehicle this year, we're gonna shift it to the next year.
Okay, thanks.
Mm-hmm.
Further questions? Thanks very much Dana. Appreciate the thorough report. And we'll move on to item 10, which are our appointments from our previous work session meeting. We have volunteer board committee appointments to make that weren't made earlier and we'll go ahead and start with council's appointments for the six positions, which are three-year terms to the Whitefish Convention and Visitor Bureau. Andy.
I won't read them all by name, just for time's sake, but I would move that we reappoint all six of the incumbents to the WCBB board and I won't specify the terms on that, given Dylan's comments about how we had six expiring and he needs to work with Michelle and come up with a little bit more of a staggered schedule on the six.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Further discussion? Jen.
Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna abstain from voting since I am a part owner and Old Town Creative, who is the creative agency of record for the Whitefish CBD.
Thank you Jen. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign and the motion does carry unanimously. We'll move on to the Library Board of Trustees. There's an error on the City Council's special session agenda, it's only one position, it'll serve a five-year term. We had one incumbent, Mitchell Drachman, that reapplied and a new applicant Cheryl, who's been involved with the library for some time now. I think they're both great applicants and would serve the position well. I always have a hard time not reappointing an incumbent when they've certainly put the effort in and shown some ambition and drive, which in my opinion, Mitchell has demonstrated, so I would motion to reappoint Mitchell Drachman for a five-year term to the Library Board of Trustees and that needs to be ratified by the council by a showing of hands. And that passes on a four to one with Counselor Hildner abstaining. And we'll move on to the Architectural Review Committee, which is a council appointment. We had a new applicant, very qualified and eager to join, and that would be Chris Barnes. We'll need a motion to that effect.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to appoint Chris Barnes to the Architecture Review Committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Williams. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign and that carries unanimously. We'll move on to counselor and mayor comments. Richard, would you like to begin?
I may not have anything.
Gotta find something.
No comments this evening.
Thank you Richard. Katie?
No comments either.
Thanks. Jen.
Only that we, what we've already covered at the beginning of the meeting, just to make sure, we get back with Gary Stevens, who brought attention, or brought to our attention during public comment to address the concerns behind his property at the Taggery. And that's all I have for this evening. Thank you.
Thanks Jen. Frank.
Looking forward to moving into City Hall.
Soon. Andy.
It's our last meeting here, it is, isn't it?
It is.
Oh my gosh, I'm not gonna miss it. Fond farewell for it, but I won't, maybe I'll be able to hear in the new location. Just one thing, I know we've brought it up a number of times, but it wasn't this Sunday, but it was the previous Sunday, I went about 5:00 in the afternoon to recycle my cardboard and it looked like a bomb had gone off there. It was literally stacked between all of the bins to the top of the bins, it was flowing out of the bins, it was all over in front of the bins, it was the same with, I mean, it was a mess, it was horrible. So I know we've talked to those guys, we need to talk to them again, but I will say there's some citizen responsibility here too and it's a long bit of pet peeve of mine, people crush your cardboard! Boxes this big take up a lot of space and that would help a lot if people would crush their cardboard. We'd reduce the volume there by literally 30, 40%. I mean, everything that was out of the box, on the ground, hadn't been crushed. Most of the open top ones where you can't slide or you don't have to slide it through. Most of the open top ones where you can't slide, where you don't have to slide it through, none of that was crushed. And so people bear a little responsibility, please. So, I mean, we're doing the best we can as the city, but we need some help. Thank you.
Thanks, Andy. I have nothing tonight other than I will not be at the budget meeting on May 30th, so, Richard, it's all yours, and I'll resume my work on June 5th.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And on that note, we are adjourned. Thanks.